Pastor Ed Robinson from Pleasantville Baptist Church.
Plaids, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would bow your heads with me in prayer, eternal God, I have my Father, it is because of your grace and your mercies that we stand here in this hollow place. We pray, God, that you bless each mind that has placed themselves in decision to serve this county. You know what we are in need of more than we do ourselves. So we pray, Father, that as you stir up the gifts that's in each one of them, that it will be reflected upon the decisions that are made here. Walk with them, speak in their hearts. Keep them ever mindful of the fact that because of you, we have this great treasure in earth and vessels. Bring us now closer to your grace and your mercies. We pray continually, Father, for heal this in this land, especially for this COVID and this pandemic that we are so covered with. Bless us now, Father, as we go forward, for it is in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray, and amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. We appreciate that very much. We definitely need you. All right, at this time, the election of chairman, I will turn it over to our county clerk, Dawson.
Okay, and at this time, I will open the floor for nomination for chairman.
Madam Clerk, it's my honor to nominate Johnny Moak in the third district for chairman.
Okay, any others? So Commissioner Blake, would you like to?
Please.
Okay. And I'll call real. Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Raper?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Epperson?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Krahn?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Moe?
Yes.
Peet?
Yes.
Thompson. Okay, that's thirteen in favor and none opposed in one act. Congratulations, Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, madam. I want to say something about that here in the men, but I appreciate that very much. Appreciate all of you guys. Now I'll turn our attention to election of vice chairman. At this time, Oliver, say the nominations of vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Kra for last year, please.
Commissioner Kra.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Peet.
Commissioner Peet. Any other nominations? Seeing none. Call roll, ma'am.
Okay, so when I call your name, if you'll say I was the name that you would like to vote for. Goins?
Peet.
Slater?
Kra.
Mason?
Kra.
Davis?
Kra.
Raper?
Kra.
Winters?
Kra.
Epperson?
Peet.
Hughes?
Commissioner Kra.
Alford?
Kra.
Kra?
Kra.
Blake?
Kra.
Moe?
Kra.
Peet?
Peet.
Okay. That's ten for Kra, three for Peet, and one act.
Congratulations, Vice Chairman. Uh, before we move on, um, I'd like to make a statement here real quick. I want to thank my fellow colleagues for selecting me to serve as chairman. It's been a privilege to serve this commission for the past three years, and I'm grateful and humbled by your confidence in me moving forward. In the trying times that we live in today, many attempt to divide people in order to break them, for they know a divided house cannot stand. I believe we are seeing that today across the world and even our country, which we profess to love. It concerns me that the division we see in our country on the national level will trickle down to local government, including Bradley County. That's why I feel this body should stand as a united front. Yes, we may argue an issue, and we'll do that frequently, but we should never let division destroy us from within. Patrick Henry, one of our forefathers, once said, "Let us trust God, and our better judgment will set us right hereafter. United we stand, divided we fall." And Scripture Ecclesiastes four, verses nine through twelve, tells us, "Two are better than one because they have a good reward for their efforts; or either falls, his companion can lift him up." It goes on to say, "And if someone overpowers one, two can resist him. A rope of three strands is not easily broken." My hope for this commission is, as we address the issues and concerns within our county government and our community, we remember that we are stronger and better together than we are separate. Thank you. Madam, would you call roll?
Goins?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Mason?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Raper?
Here.
Winters?
Here.
Epperson?
Here.
Hughes?
Here.
Alford?
Here.
Krahn?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
Moe?
Here.
Peet?
Here.
Here.
That's thirteen in favor and none opposed in one act.
Thank you, madam. May I entertain a motion for approval, Ben? Motion for Commissioner Hughes, second for Commissioner Kra. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Goins?
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Raper?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Epperson?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Kra.
Yes.
Blake?
Yeah.
Moe?
Yes.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one act.
Thank you, madam. Uh, report from the county mayor, Mayor Davis is not able to be with us today. He is doing well, for those of you who are wondering, he is doing well. We saw him earlier today. He had something he had to be at tonight, so he couldn't be here. Mr. Lewis, does the mayor leave you anything? I know he addressed us at finance about something. Okay, thank you, sir.
There's one thing. It requires ten votes.
Yes, there's two resolutions that'll be put on the generator.
Yeah, they will go, as we go through the thing, if people want to bring those up. Okay. Uh, motion for consent agenda. Mr. Epperson, second for Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Raper?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Epperson?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Krahn?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Moe?
Yes.
Peet?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one act.
Thank you, madam. And now we're from, now four reports from committees and/or districts, and we'll start with you, Mr. Epperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, everything's going great in the first district. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hughes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll report it exactly the way it's put to me, which I've had numerous calls over landfill over the nauseous gases that's been released from it. So, as I said, I pass it on, I pass it down.
Thank you. Can't wait today when we get anything booked up and come on. Thank you, sir. Mr. Alford?
Uh, second.
Where? Thank you, sir. Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first thing is, I had a meeting with, well, let me back up. Finance met today, real quick meeting, um, and there'll be a few things coming. So, uh, I met with the Comptroller's Office, the GIS, Wayne and I did last week. I set our first redistricting committee meeting for September twenty-seventh at five thirty. We're gonna start the process. Uh, we've got the numbers in, census data and the block data. Wayne had to upgrade his system, but he has the data. He'll get it layered and all that kind of stuff and start that process. And talking with them, they have a, Crystal, they have a template resolution for us, um, that they've sent, or will send or whatever, and it has all that in there. Uh, interesting enough, in our conversation, I believe he said that three or four counties are reducing the number of commissioners that they currently have. I didn't ever ask, but I'm assuming, which I think is a safe assumption, that we're gonna stay with seven districts, two commissioners per district on our resolution. The other thing on there is, um, like you said, I know this is quite a bit away, but, uh, October eighteenth voting session, hopefully we'll have all the work done and all our agreements, and we can have, uh, the resolution on the October eighteenth voting session, uh, so that it can get passed and get up to the Comptroller's Office. So, let's set those two dates, uh, any other committees may have between the twenty-seventh and the eighteenth. But let's shoot for the eighteenth of October to have our work done on redistricting. Next, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I wish I could say that everything is good in the third district. As me and this came down on Coe Street, we saw the, uh, the tragic sight of the accident. Our good friend David Jenkins and, um, the other gentleman, Mr. Christopher Jacobia, I hope saying this hang right. Just great. He goes with his family and off with my people's condolences. So, I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Peet?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Kra?
Second. This week is done, fine.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Goins?
Good district, good way.
Thank you. Mr. Slater?
Mr. Chairman, you have before you a hard copy of a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a one-year lease agreement with Susan Joyce from the State Sex Offender Counseling Group for the use of a misdemeanor probation conference room located at the Workhouse Editions of Bradley County Judicial Complex to provide sex offender treatment one day per week at a rate of five thousand two hundred dollars per year. I put this resolution in the form of a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll second back Commissioner Kra. Any discussion? Mr. Blake, this was discussed, finance, they're right.
Did we vote on it though?
Did not vote.
So this is part of ten.
Okay. Very good. Any discussions on it? It will require ten votes. Madam, call the rolls.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Raper?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Epperson?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Krahn?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Moe?
Yes.
Peet?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed in one act.
Passed. Mr. Slater?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Mason?
Thanks, Chairman Moe. Uh, six districts doing well. I'd tell you, I'd like to wish my condolences to Jenkins family, David, I've known David for a long time. Send out prayers, but okay, we'll win. And we'll win.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Davis?
Mr. Chairman, I have several things, so bear with me for just a minute. Um, the first one is, um, I think we're all looking for some good news these days, and everybody knows that, um, I'm involved with the SPCA, and we found a dog after three years of being lost. So they scanned her microchip and located her owner, which was in Woodstock, Georgia, which is nearly two hours away. This dog's name is Mira. The owner is not able to take Mira back, and so she is up for adoption. If you're looking for a stinky determined dog, this one is for you. Uh, make an appointment to adopt her today. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the SPCA is also pursuing a no-kill excellence grant through the best friends and Rachel Ray Foundation. We're gearing it toward new kennels to prevent the spread of illness in-house. A letter of support from the county commission would bolster our grant. Before you is a draft of a letter of support from the county commission to the Best Friends Animal Society. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm moved to approve the letter of support for the SPCA no-kill excellent grant application.
Sir, I have a second back, Commissioner Raper. Any discussion? On this, can I find it?
A letter.
Yeah, you found it, buddy. Any discussion, questions? Madam, call roll.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Raper?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Epperson?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Krahn?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Moe?
Yes.
Peet?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed in one act.
Mr. Davis?
Also, Mr. Chairman, you may recall each year we adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with the city of Cleveland regarding the, um, BRAG grant. You may also know, oh, I'm sorry, it's the JAG grant. I have a resolution today for your consideration authorizing the interlocal agreement, as well as a copy of the interlo- interlocal agreement. You may read in the resolution, the city of Cleveland will share with the county fourteen thousand four hundred and three dollars for the purpose of mobile data computers. The agreement was approved by the city council last month. Mr. Chairman, I place this resolution in the form of a motion.
Thank you, ma'am. Second back, Commissioner Winters. Any discussion on this? Call roll, please, madam.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Raper?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Epperson?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Krahn?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Moe?
Yes.
Peet?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed in one act.
Last one, Mr. Chairman. You have before you a hard copy of a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and enter into a five-year agreement with Axon to provide one hundred and twenty-five tasers, conductive, um, energy weapons, and accessories to the Bradley County Sheriff's Office for an amount of five hundred and two thousand dollars to be paid over a five-year period. Mr. Chairman, I place this resolution in the form of a motion.
That's second back, Commissioner Slater. Any discussion? Call roll, please, madam.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Raper?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Epperson?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Krahn?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Moe?
Yes.
Peet?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one act.
Anything else?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Have a drink.
I know all my options.
Mr. Raper?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, um, everything's going well in the seventh. Uh, we're just virus fighting, so, uh, as everyone is, and, uh, it's pretty bad all over the county. So, uh, pray for many families. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Winters?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I was just notified today as the chairman of General Committee that one of our officers passed away Sunday. Scott Alford, who is the third shift lieutenant, died of COVID Sunday. He had served eighteen years on the force. This is a insidious disease. He had a lot more years to serve. Uh, I think we should remember Jenkins family and this family as well in our prayers. Um, uh, I want to compliment one of our departments. I was driving in one of my cars, checking out the glove box and realized that, uh, I did not have registration on that car. And I'd been driving it for three days, four days, and I'm just glad I wasn't picked up. But as I rushed to get to the clerk's office, I stood in line with everybody, and they, I was just very proud of the team there. They were very kind, they were very efficient, they moved us smoothly, and the lady gave me my registration quickly, twenty-two bucks, and I was, I was I'm no longer a, a wheel driver. So I, I thank her for the leadership. At this time, I think you were even training one or two people, uh, they were doing all of that. But, uh, it's good credit where credit's due. There are people that are doing great jobs, great work in our county, and I appreciate her. My family appreciates her, and I'm glad I did get picked up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Winters. I'm sure Donna appreciates that.
I do, for sure. Thank you. I'm glad to get picked up.
May I entertain a motion for approval, Ben? Commissioner Hughes, I have a second. Mr. Goins? Any discussion? Call roll, please, madam.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Raper?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Epperson?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Krahn?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Moe?
Yes.
Peet?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed in one act.
Okay, moving into the agenda, I don't know, may, said District Constable vacancy. Pages five through fifteen, we have received, um, over, whenever we did, we have received quite a few, uh, applications. Couple have been pulled. So at this moment, what we will do is I will call them up if they are here, and they'll have two minutes to tell us a little bit about themselves, why we should vote for them, this Tim Fowler here. Come on up, Mr. Fowler.
Um, I, I've, I have been in, I don't know if you have the paper in front of me, but I, I've been in law enforcement. I think this is my twenty-sixth year. Uh, I started out as a explorer when I was fifteen or sixteen, and then, as I got older, went to the academy, and, um, and then continued on my law enforcement experience. I, um, I've worked for Bradley County Sheriff's Office. I, um, am current on all of my post certifications. I am also a instructor, post-certified instructor with the state. Um, all my certifications are current, all the way from my post certification, all the way down to my, um, firearms, my pager, everything, this needs to be a law enforcement officer, everything is current at this time. And, uh, I love serving the, the community and doing law enforcement work. That's, that's what I know. Um, as some of you know, I, I put in for, uh, County Commissioner several months ago, and, uh, and from what I understand, I'm, I'm glad that didn't happen, because Mr. Slater seems to be doing a great job. And, um, but that's the first time I've ever ran, ran for anything. Uh, I, I didn't know that area of work, but I know law enforcement. And that's the reason why I put in for, um, this position, is I know law enforcement. And I, I'm, I'm, I don't, don't want to be, sound arrogant or anything, but, but that's my expertise. I'm trained in that. I know how to, um, keep a department from getting sued. Uh, that's never happened with me. I don't, uh, minor complaints, I, other than that, I've, I've never, um, had any complaints. Sheriff Lawson can tell you that, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. You want to have any questions, Mr. Fowler? Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Slater?
So if you're appointed tonight, do you plan to run in the next election to keep the seat?
Uh, yes, I'm hoping.
Any other question? Thank you, sir. Uh, the next person who applied is James Harris. Mr. Harris?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's James Harris. I have got twenty-plus years in law enforcement. I started law enforcement back in ninety-one, went on through, and I'm currently in Bradley County. All my post certification is up to date and online. Uh, I've got twenty-plus years in District Seven, lived in District Seven. All my life, I was born in District Seven, and I've got a beautiful wife I've been married to for eighteen years. She's right here, Sandy Harris. And she, she's my backbone of my progress. Uh, I've never had a complaint. I know how to run a department. I know how to run, keep from getting sued, like Mr. Fowler said. Uh, that's all I know how to do is on law enforcement. And I'm glad I'm running in the term when it comes election time. And I've got a back, strong roots in Bradley County, and my wife also has strong roots there too, and we're not going to leave Bradley County. And I'm glad I'm standing in District Seven.
Any questions, Mr. Harris? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. Uh, next is Mr. Steve Murray. Mr. Murray here? Mr. Murray is not present. And then I believe the other candidates pulled, pulled their name out, correct? Moe? Okay. At this time, the audience of the community wanted to nominate someone that lives in the second district. You're welcome to nominate someone. Anyone you know besides who was up here? Okay, seeing none. At this time, I will take nominations, and I think we should probably look at the seventh district first and see what they have to say. Mr. May I take the lead?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Um, first of all, I wanted to thank you for this opportunity, and, um, it, it's actually been a good experience for me, a learning experience for me. Uh, I got to interview all four candidates, and I know that, uh, only two, uh, one, I would like to, uh, single out in, in a good way. Um, uh, Mr. Woody, uh, he, he had also applied. He recently, maybe even as, as soon as, uh, you know, the last few days, pulled out his name, and his reasoning was, uh, because he is a current paramedic, and they, they're needing all the extra help at the emergency room that they possibly can, so, uh, I think is a wonderful reason, and I admire him for, uh, making that choice and, uh, putting his own interests aside for, uh, public safety and welfare. So, uh, so anyway, uh, thank him for applying in the first place. The next thing is, is the, uh, all four of them together, excellent, uh, interviews, and, uh, I enjoyed meeting with those. Uh, I did my homework. I feel like well on this. Uh, I interviewed all four of those. Uh, I have done background check, checks, uh, on those, and so it has brought me to this point where, uh, I feel like, uh, that the choice I have made, uh, out of all the good choices that, that have applied, is the best choice for Bradley County in the seventh district, and I would like to nominate this time, Mr. Fowler.
Tim Fowler? Mr. Jones? Mr. Winters?
Um, I too vetted all four, and, uh, my, my work was more in references and checking out, uh, training ability and all that. And we have stellar people, as you, as you've seen here, as candidates. Uh, I, I support my colleague in the seventh district. Uh, Mr. Fowler will be able to do training, uh, he continues his job, do training for, uh, other, other constables that will constantly need that post-training ability, so that was the, I appreciate Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris keeps an eye on us, takes a very good, he's very conscientious and a fine candidate. Candidates that are in place, we looked at them very strongly. I collated, took the one-on-one deal, meeting with them, I, I took the references and also checked the references too and, and, uh, moved forward. So I support this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other nominations, ma'am, along with the mission? Madam Dean, do we call roll? Call roll, please, ma'am.
Goins?
Tim Fowler?
Slater?
Fowler.
Mason?
Fowler.
Davis?
Fowler.
Raper?
Mr. Fowler?
Winters?
Tim Fowler.
Epperson?
Fowler.
Hughes?
Fowler.
Alford?
Harris.
Kra.
Fowler.
Blake.
Fowler.
Mull.
Fowler.
Pete.
Fowler.
So that's twelve in favor of Fowler, one for Harris, and one X.
Congratulations, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you.
Well, that forward working with you.
Thank you.
All right, moving into item B. Tom Carr. Mr. Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a, submit a motion to send a request to the city of Cleveland to waive the annexation requirement to access sewer for the property owned by ACTH Properties and Douglas and Dunn, Dunsmore, tax map zero five six, parcels thirty-five and thirty-five point zero four.
Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Madam Calhoun?
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Raper.
Yes.
Winters.
What, what, what do we, yes, yes, and a no in here?
A motion to send a letter to the city.
This is to send the letter, well, to the city, and it's about the property we've already discussed. We actually have two items on the agenda that came through the show.
Well, all we're willing to hear is to send the letter. We have no idea what the city's going to do when they receive the letter, right?
That's correct.
So. Thank goodness.
Although, yes, my colleagues, but I don't believe the city will do this. I guess it's a futile effort. City individuals I've talked to, I don't understand what's this, so I vote with my colleagues, yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Kra.
Yes.
Blake.
No.
Mull.
No.
Pete.
No.
Okay. Does anyone wish to change their vote? It's nine in favor, four opposed, one X.
That motion passes, but we will send a request to the city to waive the annexation requirement. My point at this point is to ask our county attorney, before we entertain the next thing, where are we?
Well, obviously, if you, since this is on the agenda, you have to vote it up or down. But it does tie into what you just voted on. If you want to give the city time to answer the letter before you would vote this up or down, you still would need to vote on it tonight because it's on the agenda. But you have previously voted to send a letter, and this does, if they said yes and you had already approved this, I'm not sure how that would work exactly. But you do have to do something with this because it's on the agenda, whether it's a substitute motion or to vote it up or vote it down.
Mr. Al.
That's the point I was trying to make a minute ago. If we pass this, send this letter, and then we vote on item C later on, does that make that letter muted? Because it knew you're sending the letter if we're going to pass that interlocal agreement. So it's already passed, the city, I know it's going to say no. You know, why would they say yes? To me, to me, it's a question, and we should have reversed them or not have one of them on the agenda. I'd like to make a motion if we could to remove item C or B one, or reverse them, or do something.
You could make a substitute motion to, to not vote on this tonight and vote on it at some future time. But because we've already voted on the other one, you can't change the order at this point.
You're talking about item C, vote, vote on it later.
You could do a substitute motion to vote on it at some future time.
Till the city answers our letter.
Are you making that as a substitute motion?
So would you make a replacement, make an original?
Then yes, you would have to, you would have to make a substitute motion once a motion is made to postpone it or do something with it. We've got to vote on it some way.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, are we going to vote on this, or we're going to have a second?
He's going to put it on, he's going to make the motion first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me ask you this, Crystal. I mean, you know, the motion is to enter into an interlocal agreement with the city. I understand the letter, all we did was like a verification was, first board is going to draft a letter and we'll send it, walk it over there, what have you. Is it possible to make this motion, I'm thinking out loud here, which I shouldn't do, but continue? That if the city agrees to waive, then this is null and void? Because at that point, they waived it. But if they don't waive it, this is already a done deal, we don't have to come back and do anything.
You could say that if the city says no, we, you would approve this.
This has already been, this is approved and ready to go if the city says no to the request that's being sent into the letter. Because what I don't want is to have to bring this resolution back to another voting session. I think, you know, we asked for more time so we could research. We did our research. We had a week off because of the fifth Monday. We're now here at September seventh. By the time the letter gets to the city and the city holds their meeting and goes over, votes it on one way or the other, gets that, the answer to that vote back to us, we're probably talking October before we would get to this. So I like, if I'm allowed to, I'd like to make a contingency in my resolution, in my motion, that if the city votes to waive, this is null and voided. If they, if the city votes to not accept the letter, then this is ready to go.
You can absolutely do this, and this is going to sound very procedural, but we, you need to make the motion as you have it here first and get a second, and then you can make a substitute of your own motion once it's on the floor.
That's what I want to make sure. I want that.
That's what I want to make sure we're correct, too.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution authorizes the county mayor to enter, into annexation, annexation interlocal agreement between the city of Cleveland and Bradley County regarding the non-continuous annexation of the property currently owned by ACTH Properties, tax map zero five six parcel thirty-five point zero zero, thirty-five point zero four, page sixteen seventeen in our packet. I'll put that in form of a motion. Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Pete. Okay, discussion? Yes, Mr. Blake?
This time I'd like to make a substitute motion that if the city of Cleveland decides to honor and the waive that's going to be sent in the letter, that this motion, this resolution is null and voided at that time. If the city votes to do nothing with it, because that's the right way to say, they voted down, then this resolution is good to go.
I was just going to say, I think I would, would say that you're only authorizing the mayor to sign it if the city says no to the request in A. Section A.
Second in substitute.
You put that as a motion, a substitute motion. And we have a second by Commissioner Pete. Everybody understand what we're doing? Got it? Any discussion on?
And the substitute motion is the, is the resolution that's intact, just?
Did you get that, Miss Mull? Did you get that, a substitute?
Yes.
I have a motion from Commissioner, a substitute motion from Commissioner Blake, the second from Commissioner Pete. Madam, would you call roll?
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Raper.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Everson.
Yes.
Hughes.
No.
Alford.
No.
Kra.
No.
Blake.
Yes.
Mull.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? That's ten in favor, three opposed, and one X.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Motion passes. All right. Communication from the audience, anyone like to speak before the commission? State your name and address, sir, even though I know you.
My name's Phillips. I put on the coat, but we need to tell me, Davis turned me up.
I do.
Anyway, I'd like to say thank you so much. We do need the housing, we need affordable housing. This answer is coming. My colleagues are here and they're, they're ecstatic. We represent about nine hundred people in Bradley County, plus banks and lenders and everything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak before the commission? Yes, Mr. Fowler.
I'd just like to say I appreciate your confidence in me, and I will do the best of my ability to do a good job, and as I've done in the past in law enforcement, I just want to say I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. We need to discuss, will he need to sit somewhere and get sworn in?
Yes.
Yes. I guess they pick, right?
Yeah, it's going to say, well, Edmond, it doesn't have to. He, he can't take office until it's perfect.
Yeah, we have to have the judge have to do that.
Mayor can do it.
Mayor trying to do that. We'll talk about that. Anyone else want to speak before the commission? Okay, that being said, announcements, and there are a few. Next meeting, Monday, work session, September thirteenth, twelve o'clock, here at the courthouse. An HCL workshop, September ninth, at five thirty, in the commission room. Saturday, this came to me, guys didn't get this because I didn't know if I've sent me and me to tell you, but Saturday, September eleventh, at the Elks Lodge, there'll be a special memorial service for the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. They have a guest speaker coming at ten o'clock in the morning, ten till eleven at the Elks Lodge. Ask me if you could be there, please come. Monday, September thirteenth, C-TAS, our Tennessee Commissioners Association will meet from five thirty to seven thirty at the Elks Lodge. Dinner will be provided. If you haven't already contacted Lori, please do, to let her know so that the mayor can get a final count. And then September twentieth, at nine o'clock, we will have a meeting, a commissioners' meeting before our commission meeting, at nine o'clock in the morning, to discuss the federal funds that were coming. And the way that we're going to do this is kind of just do a, a discussion type thing, and we're going to do it kind of like we did our priorities of the commission, where